Yeah. All right. Is four, four is a quorum? Sure. Okay, we'd like to call this meeting of the Utah County Planning Commission to order on this February 18th at 5:30 PM. And we'd like to welcome any visitors. We do have a new commissioner, an alternate commissioner with us for the first time tonight. Do you want to introduce yourself, Seth?
Yeah. Just on, okay. Seth Cox, born and raised in Lehigh, currently live in Linden. Have five kids and just been trying to stay politically active and involved in our community, so.
Awesome. Thank you for that. We'll start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Davis, would you lead us in that tonight?
Sure. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Who's want to say play ball?
Okay. First item of business is our minutes from our prior meeting. Karen, good. Good. Down here. So I think the minutes from the prior meeting were included in the packet for the commissioners. And are there any, any concerns or edits that need to be made? Is there a motion on the floor for the minutes?
If no one has any corrections, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 21st, 2025 meeting.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve and adopt the minutes from the prior meeting. We'll start down here with Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
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 Okay, then the minutes have been approved from our prior meeting. Sign that real quick while I'm thinking about it. Okay. We have, the next item on our agenda is withdrawn application. Welcome, Commissioner. So I don't know much about withdrawn. What do we, what do we need to say about withdrawn?
So the applicant has withdrawn their application and without the applicant, there is no action that you need to take. We put it on the agenda because we had previous meetings that show that the discussion was to have this on this agenda. However, without the applicant wanting to move forward with their application, there is no action that the planning commission needs to take.
So, so let me just make sure I understand. They've withdrawn both of their applica-, because there was two, right?
There were two.
And they withdrew both of them?
They did, yes.
So it's not just that they're not here, they actually withdrew the, the applications?
Correct. And if they wish to go through this or redo this or amend that, they would have to resubmit, noticing would have to be done, all of that action would have to be taken. And so also if the planning commission wished to go forward on any, any item that were, was originally withdrawn, they would also have to go through the, that application process or direct staff to go through the application process. So it's noticed and all the noticing and all the staff reports were done again. So even if the planning commission wanted to move forward with this without the applicant, moving their application forward, we would need to go through the entire process again to amend our land use ordinance for this.
And just one further question is, so with the withdrawal, is there any notification required to?
There is not. There is no, there's no requirement in state code or in our code. We have, there was somebody in that area that did speak at a previous meeting that did call our office and we did let them know that that had been withdrawn.
Okay, well, I mean, since there's no, there's no action, but is there any, any discussion from the commission at all?
Explains why there is nobody here.
That's why nobody's here tonight.
Yeah, I was wondering why we had some audience, so.
Probably some happy people.
Your people, don't, don't get us wrong.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, there was more people last night.
Yes, for sure. All right, I don't know if there's any, if there's no other discussion, we'll move past item D, the withdrawn applications. And go to, if I'm reading this right, let's see, D goes to E, okay. Which will require a public hearing when we get to that point, but item number one, these are land use ordinance amendments and we have item number one, JLC.
Correct.
And do you have, you have a, okay.
I will, yeah. So this item was continued from the previous meeting, even though we did not discuss this, the applicant was unable to attend that meeting, so asked that it be continued to this meeting. So noticing is, the requirement for any noticing as the state requires have been done for both meetings, so just to make you aware. There's a lot of information in the staff report that I tried to put in there about this item, just kind of give you, the applicant is requesting that the area and width in the RA5 zone be altered from five acres to two and a half acres for an HOA. The way that the applicant had written the language in, in his request, in their request, made it sound as if the, an HOA was only required to have two and a half acres. I think the intention that the applicant had was to have dwellings within an HOA to be at two and a half acres, just, just to clarify that. So that, that kind of, just to give you that, that kind of clarification, that's kind of the indication that we had with the discussions we had with the applicant. Give you a little background on this, the RA5 zone currently has about 78,000 acres in the, that's still unincorporated in the county. Primarily that's located south of Utah Lake, but it is, there are many areas throughout the county that have RA5 zoning. The RA5 zone is intended to be used for, is an agricultural zone. It is not a residential zone, although it does have residential component to that. The intent of the RA5 zone is to utilize irrigated land for growing crops and raising livestock. To kind of cover a couple items that I feel are important, the intent in the land use ordinance, I kind of pulled out a few that apply to this. One is to encourage and facilitate the orderly growth and development in the county, to foster the county's agricultural and other, agricultural and other industries, to facilitate provisions for transportation, water, sewage, public, our schools, parks, and other public requirements, reduce waste of physical, of physical and financial and human resources resulting from excessive scattering of population, and to protect both urban and non-urban development. Those are just some of the intents and purpose, those are found in the intents and purposes of the land use ordinance. The general plan is even more specific on kind of the goals of the general, the future plans of unincorporated areas in Utah County. Couple of the things I want to point out were, one, under the first objective, non-farm residences on parcels less than five acres and commercial and industrial development should not be approved within agricultural zones consisting of prime agricultural and irrigated croplands. That's just one of the points that I was kind of wanted to emphasize. Also, with residential development in objective two, it talks, in the general plan, it talks about planning for residential growth of the county, the priority of location is, sorry, excuse me, the priority of location choice is first, within existing municipalities. Second, in unincorporated communities and areas that have, have an existing water system, approved for culinary use and fire suppression within, with the capacity to provide for additional development. And third, on zoning lots in the unincorporated areas of the county which comply with all applicable requirements for residential use of the underlying zone. Skipping ahead a little bit, just the, one of, one of the things that was identified in the general plan is, it talks about the, unfortunately, the high, high value placed upon Utah County agricultural for aesthetic reasons is the very thing which threatens the continuation of farming in this area from detached, from the detached vantage point of urban county, of the urban county residents. The farmland is a, is a magnet that lures residents to resettle amidst cattle and corn fields. After moving into agricultural areas, the non-farmers, annoyance at odors, pesticides, dust, predawn tractor and sprayer noise, and runaway irrigation water creates conflict. This is one of the points that was brought out in the general plan. Trying to, I'm trying to be brief, I'm sorry, so, but kind of under some of the staff recommendations, just want to be clear that the, the goal for the RA5 is to maintain and, and promote agricultural uses. And to maintain those agricultural uses on larger lot sizes if possible to support those agricultural uses. The, so as I pointed out in the staff report, there's research that has been done that as the lot sizes get smaller in agricultural areas, it diminishes the ability for agricultural uses to exist in those areas. They tend to be pushed out by residential uses. And so it's just kind of, just to be clear that some of those things that we talked about that kind of bring conflict exist and that forces many of the farmers in those areas to kind of relocate to other areas. One of the other things that is important is at the time in the 19, in 1990, when originally the five acre zone was being contemplated, there was some communication with a state engineer that, and there's a quote in the staff report, and I think it's important, so I want to just make sure that I read this. It says, "It is my feeling that there is no, only a very small quantity of unincorporated water and the potential for withdrawing 5,000 additional acre feet from the groundwater network could prove very taxing. With that small, with that amount of wells, I am certain that mutual interference would occur and in areas with low transmisses, trans-, I'm not going to pronounce that word because I'm not going to get it right, significant drawdowns would occur. I would also be concerned about 51,000 individual drain fields and the possibility of contamination, contaminating those confined groundwater networks with the, with the unconfined aquifers carrying discharge from the drain field. I think it would be in the best interest of the health of groundwater, of the groundwater networks that this development should be, should it occur, be served by central systems." Couple other points, just briefly. There are also concerns with the health department that their distance requirements, and this is, this is a health department requirement, not a zoning requirement, so it's not necessarily something that we would enforce, but it's definitely something that you need to be aware of as far as the locating of wells within, within a lot, is that their requirement is that it's 95 feet away from the property line. If you have lots that are 100 feet wide, there's not a spot on that lot that you'll be able to put a, put a well, based on their requirements. So just to kind of, I know that I've been a little bit longer than I probably should, but just to, just to make sure that, I just want to kind of be clear that the, the general plan and the intent of the land use ordinance and the general plan is to preserve and promote, promote those agricultural uses. Two and a half acre parcels prioritize residential development over agricultural use. And the appropriate method of accommodating those uses and those, those residential uses would, would be as the general plan indicates, to first try and annex into a jurisdiction that can accommodate and serve those, those properties and those residential uses. One of the, one of the, the applicant's reasons for bringing this was to create affordable housing for, in, in unincorporated areas of Utah County. So in the Goshen area, there is a zone that allows for two and a half acre lots. Those lots are going based on the county's valuation, that's not market value, but the assessor's valuation between 750 and about 985,000 is the valuation of those. So this two and a half acre lot is not really creating affordable housing. Just one last, one last example that I will kind of want to bring out is a couple of examples that we wanted to identify in that, this is one area that has been annexed into Salem City. This area was the, was originally the, the dairy that the church owned. And just to give you an idea, in the RA5, currently they would be able to permit, this is without doing roads, without doing any, anything else, 183 units, lots that would be created in the existing RA5 zone. Doing a two and a half acre, that would double that, which would be 366 units. In Salem City right now, there, they, the low end of the zoning that they have would be about 2,053 and the high end would be about 5,000. So the reason that we have those, the policies, land use policies that we do, not only isn't to encourage agricultural uses and preserve those agricultural uses, but it's also to preserve areas that can develop into more dense developments that allow for more housing, more affordable housing, where you can see a clear difference between what the county would allow and what the jurisdictions that conserve those, those, those houses and those residential uses would, would be able to allow. And these are all on central water systems and sewer systems that can accommodate those uses as well. So it's not, if a developer were to try and go into an area to develop areas that have been zoned with two and a half acre lots, it'd be very difficult for them to be able to buy those properties from individual property owners to develop those properties into something that would be affordable housing. Also interferes, interferes with kind of transportation planning, it's, there's a whole bunch of other things that kind of go into some of the reasons why this is not supported by staff and kind of, we really have a strong opinion about not modifying this, this ordinance.
Change, or can I ask?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Are there any, because that, because that is my fundamental question, is, you know, if, you know, in the short term gain, because I, because I, I really am concerned about affordable housing and even if you, you know, it doesn't take a whole lot of extra supply to kind of tap things down, but, but there is a big difference between 360 and, you know, a couple thousand. Are there any other studies? I mean, you know, you kind of used this, but, which, which I appreciate, are there any other studies that kind of show that that is a trend in general, that when you, you know, when you break them down earlier, that it does prevent, because I, because I am looking for my grandchildren, you know, mostly, and, and, I mean, my children are going to have a problem, but my grandchildren are really going to have a problem. And so, is there any other kind of, I mean, is this, does this hold true pretty much everywhere or there are studies or is this the best guess?
There, there are studies that show both that agricultural diminish, diminishes and that development is more difficult with, with lot sizes that kind of don't fall within a city's jurisdiction. And I'm not saying that there aren't, there aren't places for two and a half acre lots. I'm, I'm not trying to say that at all. But what I am saying is that there, we, we actually have been contacted by multiple cities that appreciate the zoning that we have that prevents some of these developments from happening in order to allow for more planned developments in, adjacent to their city. Let me, I pulled up a couple other ones just to kind of give you an idea. Let me see, so this, this, this development is in Lehigh. They, we, as planners, we sometimes get together with other planners in the, in the area, in Utah County area. This is one that they took us to, to show us how the development happened, how trails were able to be developed because of, because of the open space that they had, connections between, between the different developments happened because there was the ability to have more open space. So yeah, we're, we're actually getting many jurisdictions contacting us and, and actually appreciating the fact that they don't have to deal with, some developers don't have to deal with multiple individual property owners. I'm not saying that, that they're forcing people that do want a five acre lot or a two and a half acre lot out of the area, but it, it definitely makes it easier for developments to happen that are more affordable. If you have to deal with, I mean, if on a 20 acre piece, you'd have to deal with four property owners in current zoning, which is still a lot, but eight property owners in, in a two and a half acre zone, which, when you're starting to deal with higher numbers of, of property owners, it gets more difficult for developers to get put property together in order to develop that property. And we've found that to be true throughout the county. And we've also, like I said, we've gotten support from other jurisdictions that are appreciating kind of our land use policies in that area.
Is there, is that trend the same whether it's agriculture or non-agriculture or?
I don't know that I have that specific of information about whether the land use prior to that is agricultural or not, not, generally it is agricultural uses.
Just because it's flatter, it's easier to?
Right. So, so yeah, in, in some of our jurisdictions, the CE1 zone is in the mountainous areas where elevation changes and topography are going to be issues, where, in the areas where agricultural happens, it's generally flat or irrigated land that's been cultivated and flattened out so that it makes it much easier for developers to come in and produce that number of units.
Right, can I add? Yeah, I just, I mean, I've been listening to what Stephen White, my representative's been talking about and I've done a lot of research on, there's two topics, there's housing affordability and there's affordable housing, which are two different conversations. And so I think what we're talking about is housing affordability and it seems like from just the stuff that Stephen White has looked into extensively for the state of Utah, what makes housing affordability is going to come, first of all, it's the missing middle. So yeah, something that's over 600,000 or 700,000 isn't what, what we're looking for in terms of housing affordability. But also too, it's a lot size. And so the, I mean, that's what it comes down to is, you know, infrastructure, but also the lot size is what's going to make, you know, you know, young people to be able to afford houses.
Right. And so also along with that, in areas that are not developed, I mean, in, if you're looking at the RA5 zone, if you're looking at trying to get access for employment, access to other resources, that people like, as you probably well know, you, you have to drive a ways to get to a grocery store. And that's going to be the same thing with areas in the RA5 zone, is it's going to create areas or that people are farther away from their jobs or create more demand on transportation, infrastructure, things of that nature. So there are other considerations that are going to happen because of the changes to, the requested changes.
One question, so since the request is related to HOA, what, what does that overlay to this discussion that we haven't heard yet?
Yeah, so as far as the county's methodology goes, it's really not something that we really take into, into consideration. It's, I mean, HOAs are another layer of requirements that a property owner would have to deal with. We don't enforce HOA requirements. We don't generally deal with. We don't generally deal with HOAs directly. It is not something we want to be in the business of making sure that they maintain an HOA. And HOAs can be there and they can go away if the property owners decide to.
And so, the term approved HOA means nothing to the county?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, like I said, the language that they're proposing doesn't really, it basically allows an HOA to be on two and a half acres, not dwellings within HOAs to be on two and a half acres.
And so, we don't have an ordinance around HOAs or extra privileges that an HOA would gain if it was approved by the county or something? In fact, I don't remember hearing any, you know, applicant for an HOA come here, so it's not something we deal with, right?
Right. We don't, in fact, we try to stay out of dealing with HOAs because they have their own requirements and their own interests, and we don't want to be in the middle of those interests or those requirements. You can follow up with the attorney's office to ask them how much fund they have dealing with HOAs.
Yeah, try and avoid them as well.
Are there any other questions for staff from the commission? Okay, is, do we have JLC here? Anyone, is the applicant here?
Did you need to open it up?
Well, I think we can have the applicant speak before we open the public hearing, if they're here, but I don't see...
We followed up with him a couple times. We asked him, like, initially, he sent us an email, kind of being unclear about whether he wanted to be on this meeting. We tried to follow up with him to let him know that it was on this agenda and that we were going to be hearing this item on the agenda. There was not, we did not receive a response from him.
Okay. Is, okay, so, I think we probably need to open a public hearing. And that, was it, did you have something else?
I don't know if it's appropriate just to make a motion to move to the next item on the agenda, or do we have to hear, do we have to hear this?
You don't, you're not required to hear from the applicant?
Since he is not, I mean, I don't know if we want to, if it's our policy to discuss something if the person is not here. I mean, I would just move to...
You can still hear public comment if you want to do that.
I would also add too, this was on, we didn't have time, we ran out of time last month on this topic, and so, I don't think, I don't know if the applicant was here.
Was this on our agenda last month?
No, he requested this not be heard on last month's agenda. He asked that it be moved to this month. And it was his request that this be heard on this month's application. We heard from him during that time period stating that he was intending to be here. I don't know why he did not make it.
I move that we open the public hearing.
I think since we've got people who saw this on the agenda, we should open the public agenda for sure. So, we've got a motion to open a public hearing. A second, we'll start down there with the commissioner.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in our audience here or anyone that would like to address the commission on this topic? Come on, come on, come on. No? Okay. All right, so, there's no additional comment. You want to make a motion then, Chris?
I move that we move to the next item on the agenda.
We continue this item to next month?
Yeah, how does that work?
Yeah, if you're going to, if you're planning on bringing this up to see if he comes, then you can move on to the next, and then if you...
And I would just see, I wouldn't move it if he comes in, but I'm not saying stick it on the next agenda, I just moving to, just move to the next item and he can coordinate with staff if he, to schedule it again, but I think there's going to have to be a public notice anyway, if it would be to the next one.
So, the noticing has already been done. I mean, we'll still put it on our website, we'll still publish agendas on the state website as well, so that it will be noticed as we're required to per state code. We'll also, if you do wish to continue this to another meeting, it would be helpful for us to know, like, to specify which meeting you're wanting to continue that item to, and we can, if you do wish to continue it, we can reach out to that applicant if necessary.
If we pass, I don't even know if that's an action, does that give us difficulty if he wants, does he have to reapply then, I guess? Like, we haven't even voted on it, does he have to reapply, resubmit?
So, there, so, just to, as you know, this is a recommending body. This item will still go to the county commission for final discussion. They still would be able to hear that if he, if the applicant wanted to attend that meeting, they could still attend that meeting and be heard at the county commission meeting.
Would it go to the county commission if we continued it to another meeting?
It would not until you make a recommendation.
So, I, I mean, my suggestion is we continue it.
Continue it too.
At least one more, and then we can decide what to do.
I hate to keep wasting everybody's time. If they're not going to show up, then act on it, vote on it.
Now's what you're thinking?
That's my opinion, but I don't want to overrule, I mean, he's made a motion, so...
I mean, I would move to give him one more chance, and then if we have, I mean, what I'd really like to do is just kind of, just move to the next item and wait until staff, if he approaches staff, for staff to put it on a future meeting, but I don't know, that's not a possibility.
Staff would push it on to the commission, whether we voted on it or not.
So, well, first, there is a motion, so we want to make sure that we, make sure we address that. But if you want to put this, move to the next item and come back to this item, during one of the agenda items that one of our other planners, I will see if I can find some contact information and I will try and reach out to them, and then you can make a decision at that point if you want to do that.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's, withdraw my motion and put forward that we move to the next item, putting this on the next meeting.
That would be a continuation.
Oh, a continuation, yeah.
I think you'd move it to the end of the agenda to allow time if you're stuck in traffic, but in my personal opinion, this is similar to Zola's, if it's been noticed, the applicant is well aware, and we are a recommending body, so we can make a recommendation based on the information that we have before us, and then when it goes to the county commission, the applicant will have another opportunity to present information rather than delaying the process.
And one more question before, is, so, it looks like he submitted this back in November?
He did.
And so, did he, he didn't get to pick the date that this would be discussed here?
So, the date that we, will typically, once we receive an application, that application needs to be in a specific timeframe before the meeting in order to make the next agenda meeting, or the next meeting. His request was that he be on the January meeting, and then when it got closer to the January meeting, he then requested that he be put on to the February meeting.
On this meeting, so he asked for this meeting, I guess is the main...
Yeah, this is, this item has been on for a while, and I'm not trying to sway it one way or another, but he's been well informed as far as what the process is and what meeting he's going to be on multiple times, so...
Good, it sounds like right now, we've got a motion to continue without a second. We're seeing without a second. Is there another motion to entertain?
I move that the Utah County Planning Commission recommend denial to the Utah County Commission of the proposed Utah County Land Use Ordinance text amendment to sections 12.08.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to follow staff recommendation for denial.
And I would like to speak against that motion.
Okay.
You know, I do, because whatever we do with this body, it kind of is a soft, I don't think we thoroughly, until we hear from the applicant, we don't have both sides. And there might be a good reason. I haven't, if I were to have to vote on it, I would vote no as of right now, but I do think that in our system of government, we do, whether it's the court system or whatever, I think people have a right to make their case. And I'm concerned that we haven't thoroughly vetted this issue, but we are going to give the impression that it is for sure a denial. And I can't, I'm, I don't, I'm not ready to give a denial yet because I don't think I have all the information. So, that's simply why I would vote against this, is I think it kind of sets policy that, and so, anyway, that's my concern.
Yeah, and I tend to agree with you. I feel like I don't have the full story here. I still think probably I would lean to vote against it, but it is unfortunate we don't have his story, although I do think it seems like we've given, we've accommodated, we've moved it to this meeting, we've done the work to try to get that communication to take place. So, I don't think it would be, it doesn't sound like it's staff or our, you know, that the commission has failed if we vote on it as we have the information in front of us right now. But I agree with you, I wish I had his side of the story, I wish I knew what he thought, he or she, I don't know if it's a she, what the HOA would play in this and why he, you know, felt like this was something that would be good. I don't, you know, I don't think I have all the details here. I'd like to hear from, I would have liked to have heard from him before we vote, even though I don't know that it would have changed my opinion much.
And I think this forum, I think this, you know, these forums are where we should have the dialogue and the communication and ask each other questions and stuff. So, based on the information we have, what could they present that might steer you in a direction to approve this?
If I had a firm study, for me, I mean, if I had a firm study showing this didn't hurt, I mean, because one of the things we always do here is balance, my difficulty with any issue like this is I'm a property rights person. In general, I try to let people do with their property what they want to do with. And so, I am kind of, you know, he, for some reason, this individual thinks that, you know, he's got land or, you know, that's the other thing, is I don't know if he owns all this land or, you know, this is just his idea for that, but if he showed me a study that this would actually help relieve some of the pressure on, you know, the 5,000 units that were short every year and going to continue to be, you know, I could see that. And so, that's something that could change my mind.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you because, again, I think we all recognize the shortage of housing units and stuff like this. The thing that concerns me is this is a broad amendment to cover 78,000 acres. I know for a fact, well, I don't know for a fact, but I seriously doubt he owns 78,000 acres, you know? And so, I would think that if there, if he had a project that was viable, the studies showed that it could accomplish the premise that he's presenting, is there a way they could do some type of an overlay or some type of a development agreement with the county or anything like that that could allow something like that to move forward without impacting 78,000 acres? Because I, I don't want to see the agricultural uses of the county go away. I, as a water guy too, I know that water is a serious concern and as well as water, but the septic issues and sewer systems as well. So, you know, I would love to be able to hear something like that, but I just, in my mind, you know, which is pretty small.
And I was hoping that the HOA was maybe that limiting factor that you're looking for, like, maybe there's something about an HOA that would make this different, but it doesn't sound like that's the case, right? So, since that's not the case, what was, you know, because I agree with you, it'd be such a broad stroke here, and it does seem like the right way to have a smaller parcel is to be in a municipality, which already allows for all that, which is kind of the whole argument that staff's made here. So, the only thing I do feel bad is that I look here and I see that he paid $300 to submit this and then not come and get a chance to give his reasoning why he thinks this is a good idea. That's the unfortunate part because he's going to get the answer back that we talked about it without him here, and if he wants to reintroduce this, he's got to pay another $300 to get it back on the agenda, right?
He does.
So, yeah, I understand the concerns. I also, I can do a couple of things. One, I can make sure that the county commission is aware that he was not able to attend or he did not attend, and that way they can, and I will also be able to reach out to him, the applicant, directly and let them know when it's going to be on county commission meeting, which we already do, but I can make sure that he's available and that he will be able to attend so that he can be heard for that. So, yeah, so I can do those things as well to help kind of allow them, allow him to be able to voice his case for this application.
You know, and if I can just express my concern, I mean, I, you know, I don't mean to harp on the dangers of government, but I'm a big believer, in this valley about 25 years ago, there was a problem with a lot of cities denying subdivisions because they thought that there was too many open lots on the market. And that caused, cities don't, government, a lot of times, doesn't do a very good job predicting what the market wants. People that have got their own money in it sometimes have a better that. And I would argue that some of the reasons that we have, some of the problems that we have right now is that it takes a year to put a subdivision in. And so, all of a sudden, you had all these cities that they denied subdivisions, they denied subdivisions thinking there was too many lots, and then all of a sudden, there wasn't enough lots. And once you get behind that supply-demand curve, and so, I'm just hesitant of us, because no matter what happens is, I just don't know how I'll vote on the final decision because I don't want, I don't want my stamp, you know, if I vote no, am I saying that I want, I don't want it to say that I automatically want two and a half subdivisions, but I'm not ready to make that decision yet. But, and so, I think when we reject it, rather than having it an item that we haven't decided, I'm not, those that know me, I'm not afraid to make a controversial decision. It's just sometimes it's best not to make a decision before you have all the facts. But anyway, so, I'll accept whatever this body, you know?
Yeah, and I would just add a couple comments. It seems like the fundamental purpose of the RA5 zoning is to protect and promote agricultural land. And so, when I read through this, what stood out to me is what is the vision that Utah County wants? Because you have somebody who wants, in effect, change that vision. This isn't going to do anything for housing affordability whatsoever. Our issue with housing affordability is the missing middle, is smaller lots, and we hate to say it, more high-density places. So, I'm not, I don't think, and I agree with that, it's not, that's not an argument to me. But I do think that it is a crossroads in terms of, do we want, you know, Utah County to look like LA County? I mean, what's our vision for Utah County? And I think it's really going to be important to keep some open space, to keep some land open, so we have options moving forward. So, and I, so I know it's, I hear what you're saying with the private property, I completely agree with that. There's a private property issue here as well, but at the same time, there's an overall vision for what we want our grandchildren to see moving forward.
And I would agree with a lot of that. I think that it's also important for us to remember what it is that our obligations are here as a planning commission. We have some balancing and some evaluating in decisions that we make. We balance private property rights and the ability to use your land and to have vision and freedom as Commissioner Herda said, but we also have the obligation to plan and to look forward and to look broadly and set things up for success. If we approve things and items such as this, that we're not necessarily setting them up to be successful in what it is that they're wanting to do. And if there are better ways to do something, better ways to meet needs, better ways to plan forward so that we are planning and not just reacting and not only looking to granting the greatest freedom and flexibility of use of a plot, but also looking to what it means going forward and the uses around it, and not creating conflicts between existing uses and incoming uses, balancing all of the rights and all of the planning that needs to go in there, I think is an important... Balancing all of the rights and all of the planning that needs to go in there, I think is an important part of what we do.
In, in your opinion, if we were to vote on this and recommend denial, do you think that they would pull that without it going to the county commission? Or is it, is it an obligation that it goes to county commission so they vote on it?
It must go to the county commission to vote on. So they, they, it will be heard by the county commission and we do let the applicant know when it will be on the county commission. I, I, like I said, especially if, if he's not able to attend this meeting, I will make sure that I get a response from him clearly stating that he, the, the date that we're going to put it on county commission, that he'll be available.
Okay. Again, I would ask the question, is, are there any studies? I guess my concern is, is, you know, we talk about, we talked about affordability is that, you know, the assumption I think that most of us have is that if this is denied, that, that, that there will be, you know, will be preventing land from being developed into, you know, homes on 58. My concern is though, is that we might also instead of having 360 lots, because there's plenty of, you know, my experience is most people that have a million dollars to plot down on some rural land can plot $2 million. Yeah. And so, and, and so my concern is that we, you know, we, we think that we might be saving this land for higher density. And, and, and until I see, yeah, I'm, I'm a data-driven person. Until I can see that that's for sure going to happen, then.
Right. So we, we actually went through, and I only brought a couple of examples, but we actually went through the, the past three years of annexations for the county, from, from the county to incorporated jurisdictions. Majority of those are smaller pieces, but the ones, some of the larger pieces that do get annexed, I, I kind of pulled out a couple of examples, but we used existing zoning that they were zoned. So once they leave the county, they get zoned into a specific zone. And we did research on determining what that zoning would allow. We didn't, obviously we didn't take out for roads, we didn't take out for other types of, and this is the, the, based on the city's ordinance, what that density would be. And in very instance, this is another example that's in Lehigh that was 100 acres, we would be able to allow for 22, 22 units. 44 with, with a two and a half acre lot zoning in there and in, in Lehigh City, they have it zoned for 468. Let me show you another example of just in American Fork City. And I'm, I'm sure that you kind of have seen some of this development happen, but this area, let me turn on this. So these are, you can see areas that are unincorporated or not highlighted and the areas in American Fork City are green. And you can see some of this area as they develop in, in this specific area, how dense that development happens. This area right here, I think is designated for road connector. And you can see that, that this plays out in, in many areas in the county where there is open space that has been used for agricultural land that gets annexed in bigger areas that, that, that zoning, especially right now in a lot of jurisdictions, that zoning is, is more dense than what we'd be able to allow and accommodate in the county. So especially with, as we talked about with the infrastructure. So I, I completely understand. And we're, we're trying to put that information together as far as we're, we're going back with annexations and trying to track what areas have been annexed and what those numbers and zoning, when they get in there, what, what that can produce based on the zoning that they get and the, the area that they annex in. So I understand. And we, we try to give you as much information as we can to, to make those decisions because we don't want you to be less informed in making these decisions as well.
I guess my only concern is I just, I seem to hear, I seem to have friends that all seem to be gathering five acres in the south part of the county. And so, you know, and that's.
Yep. Yeah, I, I understand that. That's definitely.
The door might be already opened, I guess, you know.
Yeah. And like you said, that, that's the, that's the prerogative of private, private property owners. If they do want a five acre lot, they, they can develop that. And in cities, they have the ability to do five acres or, or less.
Okay. So we've had some discussion. Any, any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
I, I would just say I my only, I, I have a whole lot of reasons to vote against this. The only hesitation that I have is just not being able to hear their side of the story. I I'm not sure what to do about that because I, there's so many things about this that I don't think would be good to move it forward. That I don't think that they could present anything that would change my opinion on it. However, I just, I do hesitate that they can't defend their case.
It feels like the heavy arm of the, of, of the county, you know, deciding while they're not here, right? I mean, it, it does, seems like a continuation. I mean, would be the option you'd be looking for if, if you wanted to give them a chance, but they already asked for it to be delayed from last meeting to this meeting. And how, how, how much more accommodating could we have been?
And like I say, I don't, I don't see anything like the, the variation of concerns from health department concerns to, you know, the, the whole idea that cities are the ones that are better, in a better position to handle the housing affordability and that. And yeah, just a whole lot of reasons that I think they would have to defend. And I just don't see any way that they could resolve all those concerns.
And as a recommending body, we, we can vote and then, like he said, he would note to the commissioners that he wasn't present. But I, I'm going to agree that he, he's not here and he wasn't here last month and he pushed it off. And so he's had that opportunity. So you know, let, let's let, you know, let's move forward and let the commissioners decide. And he can be there.
Okay. So has everyone had a chance to get their discussion? Okay. Let's start with Commissioner Allison.
Yes.
The wait, we're, so just to, to remind, we're, we're voting that we will deny as a recommendation, we'll deny the applicant application as, as the staff has recommended. And you're voting yes to deny.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay. So we've had, let's see.
Five.
Five.
With yes and one no. So we, so the, as a commission, the vote is to deny, to recommend denial to the county commission. Okay. Thank you. That was, I think that was a very good discussion.
Do we have the ability to explain a vote? Are we playing House rules or Senate rules? Can I explain a vote? I, I just wanted, my, my, my nay is not for the, for supporting a policy to go to two and a half acres. It's just primarily because the applicant wasn't here. And I, I don't want to, my vote to, to say one way or the other of the policy. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. We, the next item is item number two, Brad Ling, which is a land use ordinance amendment.
Okay. So I'm Kevin Stinson. We received an application from Brad. He is with U-Haul and they, they had a request in our neighborhood commercial zone to add a use to our, our commercial storage. Currently, commercial storage is allowed in the neighborhood commercial. And the, the intent of that zone is almost what it says. It's kind of a, to provide those conveniences in the middle of a neighborhood. It might be a gas station, a storage unit, a little convenience store, something like that. Now, what they wanted to add with that is they wanted to add, like most U-Hauls, they wanted to add the rental of, of trucks and trailers, which is currently not allowed in the storage area or in the, the zone. We presented some options. We've been going back and forth a little bit with the applicant on what they presented. And we presented some things to them and we, we thought we had it all nailed down and we sent the, the packet off to you. And then they came back and did make one more additional request. So I'm going to be presenting a couple of line items that are different than what was presented to you. But initially, let me go through this. So we, we have come to, first of all, that the storage unit facility, that it would be an additional, an accessory use to be with a storage unit facility. So it's not something that they could just go do off on their own. And their storage unit facility to be able to do the renting of the trucks would need to be at least 75,000 square feet. And have a minimum of two stories. Now, the area that we changed is this section number two right here. And I'm going to jump to what we have worked out with the applicant on this. And the reason why they, they have an outside storage area for those trucks that they want to be able to access fairly easily. Initially, we said that needed to be all screened in with the, with side obscuring fences. They said it would be a little bit detrimental to their, their business plan. And so we came up with another solution that we feel comfortable with and they are comfortable with as well. That the outside storage unit area, that, that needs to be behind the front of the building. It cannot exceed 25,000 square feet. It does need to be smaller than the area of the building itself. And then any, any storage areas within 100 feet of a property line must be screened unless it is, we have a few exceptions on there. The, the side abutting a railroad, I-15 or an industrial zone. That's fairly standard in many places. And the other thing that we did is we did look at Spanish Fork, this area that they're particularly looking at. And I realize we're not going for this particular area because this is a countywide thing, but it would be annexed into Spanish Fork City. And so we looked at their current codes and it would apply fairly, fairly close to what their current codes are as well. So we were trying to work with that too. The second thing that, or a third thing that we, we added on there is they were requesting a display area for their trucks outside of that storage area. You know, a few trucks out front to show what, what the options were. And so we included that as well. And then, and then just some kind of kind of housekeeping items in there of, of needing a, a site plan and things as they, as they make their submittal. Overall, we feel that this does meet with the intent of the zone. We didn't see any other, any, any concerns. And again, this isn't for a site-specific area. It is for the zone, the neighborhood commercial. It's a fairly small zone in the county. We've got a few spots along I-15, some Mountain Benjamin, a few other places around there. It's not a large zone. I'm willing to entertain any questions and our applicant is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
I, I do. So this fairly closely matches what Spanish Fork already has in place as far as screening and location and height fence, that sort of fence height, that kind of stuff. So when it's annexed in, we assume it will be, it should be a fairly smooth. It's not going to stand out and.
So, so when something is annexed in, it's actually kind of grandfathered. They would go with what they're, they're currently allowed. But it does somewhat mirror Spanish Fork. So it wouldn't be, like you said, it wouldn't be a, an eyesight, eyesore or anything against what their codes are.
Spanish Fork's code, do you know if that's fairly similar to other municipalities for any other places?
It's very similar. A lot of municipalities have these types of areas screened and they do have different restrictions.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there landscaping requirements that we require for this?
No, the county, the county's not, hasn't really put that in any of their codes. They let the landscaping be with the, the people that are building and developing.
So I guess my, if it gets annexed into Spanish Fork, I would assume Spanish Fork would have some landscaping requirements. Is that something that's been discussed or?
No. Once again, once they're annexed in, they're grandfathered and so they're set on how they come in. And so there wouldn't be additional requirements for them unless they, they go and make changes and need further permits or something like that, then they would need to meet what Spanish Fork requires.
Just to follow up with that, there are, most jurisdictions do have landscaping requirements, but as, as Kevin said, county's been reluctant to kind of enforce or to include landscaping requirements. It's just difficult for, for the size of our area to enforce some of those requirements. So we, we haven't included those. I do believe that most commercial developments are anticipating adding some landscaping amenities to most of their facilities so that they can kind of fit into that area. But no, we do, we generally have not included landscaping requirements in, in most of our zones and most of our requirements.
The 75,000 square feet. Large, right? I mean, that's.
It is, it is fairly large. That, that would include all floors. And that was a number that was submitted to us by the applicant.
Do, do we have square feet requirements on other uses in that zone? I mean, that, that are similar and 75 seems large.
As far as this, like, we don't have a lot of uses that are similar to this. And generally, if in these types of uses where they're accessory to something, there can be qualifiers that they need to meet in order to get that exception. And this is similar to that. As, as Kevin said, the applicant is the one that proposed the, these numbers. I, I think it's important for us to, we, since we do not have a use like this as a separate from a storage unit and we, we tend to, most of the uses that would be similar to this, we have restricted in most zones. So this is something that's outside of what we'd normally expect in the county. So there are certain kind of qualifiers and, and criteria that would, we felt would be important and they also felt would be important to include.
All right. Any further questions for staff? Do we, we have, I think we have Brad Ling here. Would you like to?
Yeah, sure.
You know, speak to, to us?
I could probably answer a couple of the questions. So our opportunity.
Yeah. And they're, they're just asking me to have you state your name since you're at the mic now.
Brad Ling. I work for U-Haul Company of Utah. I'm the marketing company president for the state of Utah. So we do lots of operations all over the state, at least that I'm, I'm familiar with. What we're really looking for here, we've been really honestly, we've been trying to get into Spanish Fork. The opportunity there for land of the size that would hold what we needed has been extremely limited. I've worked with the planning department and the mayor and, and multiple people. And, and we've just been slowly having to work a little bit further out. Looking at developments and where things are going. Clearly, the unfortunate thing is, is as a county, I understand that this is a use that hasn't been really familiar with you. There's probably not a lot of need except for the development is forcing that need. We would be here if we didn't have a need to provide it for the consumer. And so we're fairly unfamiliar with just dealing with counties and we're, we're looking for how are we going to manage water and sprinkler systems and all of those things. But we have to overcome that because now we're trying to meet a consumer demand. The storage facility is already unauthorized used in the zone, which works out great for us. And I, and it goes right along with the affordable housing because we offer small storage rooms that fit with people that are in affordable housing. However, the, the truck rentals, we see as an accessory use. I know that there was some concern about, you know, they didn't want to open it up to a whole new line of business that your zone was not ready for. But as an accessory use, we believe that a storage customer and a truck rental customer are the same person. And so we just tried to put it into a situation where we wouldn't create a chance that literally every other truck rental or any other kind of rental company would come in and just overtake a zone and really try to put something in that was not part of the design of the zone in the first place. This is supposed to be community driven is the way I understood it. We're just trying to serve that community. And, and so we really did come back with some square footage with, you know, when you're really doing this for 75,000 square feet, we're really saying the volume of people that will need this product based in this area, they're going to have to have truck use. If there was a 10,000 square foot facility, maybe that you'd need wouldn't be there. And so we didn't want to push the county into having to grant those uses to somebody who just built some storage rooms in a backfield.
I, I just rented a U-Haul on Friday or on Friday. Well, thank you. In, if I had to guess, it was in an unincorporated area of Napa Valley. Just as a side note. Yeah. Well, thank you for that. We appreciate you.
So one thing, just once again, this, this qualifier of the 75,000 square feet, that is only with the truck rental. feet, that is only with the truck rental. Like he had mentioned, the, the storage unit facility is already in allowed use. If you want to do the truck rental, then you would need the additional...
And, and just, just as you clarify that, does the commercial storage unit allowed use have a square footage requirement just for storage units?
Right. That's what they're proposing. In fact, they...
No, 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 no.
No, they don't. They don't have a requirement for...
So the storage, commercial storage unit by itself does not have a square foot requirement? But a storage unit that also rents trucks would have a seventy-five thousand square feet requirement? And I hear what you're saying about, you know, you wouldn't want, you know, someone just, you know, renting trucks out of their barn or whatever in the backfield. I, I guess I can understand that. But at the same time, like, is this, is this so limiting that the only, the only entity that would use it would be U-Haul?
And that's a possibility, and I, I think we were probably over cautious because I wanted you to like me. No, I, clearly, the premise of what we were trying to accomplish seems sound, and I, that's the square footage we threw out there, figured that that would be a safe place, that a county would feel assured that they didn't get themselves into trouble. We would certainly entertain anything less than that, but we definitely want to see it as an accessory use. We, we think that in U-Haul's world, while many people believe we're in the truck and trailer rental business, I don't believe so. I've worked for them for thirty-five years, and we're a storage rental company that rents trucks on the side. And those trucks is what facilitates filling up our storage facilities. We have some sixty-five hundred units that U-Haul owns in the state of Utah. So this would be vital for us because it's vital for the consumer to be able to get their stuff into the storage facility.
Also, to follow up with that, just, just, we, when we have a new use in, in most of our zones, we try to be cautious, just because we don't, we don't, we don't know what, we don't know, basically. We can anticipate different things that happen with those new uses. And so when we have new uses that go in, we try to be more restrictive. And if we find that those, those concerns are, are not necessarily there, then, then those restrictions can be lessened. There is an opportunity later to adjust that number down if there's other, other storage units that feel like that is too high a number. They do have an opportunity to come to you and, and discuss that with you and see if that's something. And then we have a little more information about what we can expect for a facility that wants to do truck rentals as well. Then we have some experience in that. Right now, we don't have any experience in what, what we are going to expect and what we don't know what will be, what can be a concern for us. So that's why generally we would like to start with a more restrictive number and then come down from there, just so that we can sometimes ease into something that we can anticipate, some of the concerns that might be there. It's, it's more difficult for us to go backwards than it is to go forward.
And in preparation for this, we did a little bit of research on it. The applicant did send us some, some renderings, and these are just, you know, as I said, renderings of, of facilities that they were, how they would look. They had three different buildings here. You can see they're a nice facility. And then we went and we, we looked within Utah County even on other similar type facilities with other different companies and different things, that the cities, they didn't have these additional restrictions. And it was, you know, a car mechanic shop that had a weed patch in the back that had a few trucks parked on it that they were renting them. And it was just really a eyesore to the community. And so that's why, like, like Greg was saying, we put these in, initially was saying, okay, this is something that's going to keep this area looking clean and good. And if, as, as this progresses, then, you know, if we find that maybe those, those restrictions aren't needed, we can make changes at that time as well.
That's what I was going to ask. Is there, I mean, so let's say we pass this minimum floor area of seventy-five thousand square foot, that's a two-story building. What overall footprint, land-wise, do you anticipate here? Two acres, something like that? Is that what would normally accommodate that type of a building and setup?
Um, anywhere upwards of nearing thirty thousand square feet. But in this case, I'm not sure that would even be that big. It's more in the twenty-five thousand square foot range. But we typically never build anything more than it's, than a thirty thousand square foot footprint. And so that's kind of where our guidelines are, so. And that's, and of course, we run into, we start to become a little bit cookie cutter in our organization because of, of, there are lots of places that don't want to consume ten acres of ground with a whole bunch of minis. And that's just a bad look generally in today's standards. So we would, while we still need that many units, we just decided to take up a smaller footprint and go upwards. And people don't mind. We have elevators and they're air-conditioned and nice and, which, so your new modern stuff's all going to be built that direction, so.
I, I get what you're saying, but right now, we could have, I mean, if they had ten acres of NC, they could have ten acres of single-story sheds, right? I mean, right now, because it doesn't have any requirement.
And absolutely, that, that wouldn't be the issue.
But they wouldn't be able to rent trucks while they had those.
That's really the challenge, yes, for us, too. And while we are struggling to have enough locations renting trucks, it, it's really tough in the market that we're in. There's just not enough locations. We don't own anything in the area. We would be desperate to open up anybody just to serve the community. However, we listened to staff, and the staff really recommended that we take a really unaggressive stance as to what we were asking for. And so the size is pretty big, really limiting the people that would be willing and able to do that, including us. You know, I, I also couldn't open up a mechanic shop down the street either at this point, you know, in the, in, even at the same zone, because it wouldn't be allowed.
All right. I, I guess, I guess the, what I'm hearing is we start with limiting, and if, and if there's an applicant in the future that really couldn't afford seventy-five, but they could afford fifty, they'd come in and, and make that amendment request.
It's true, yeah. And I, I think that if, if we do have an applicant in the future that wants to, to bring that number down, we, well, hopefully we'll have some experience with a new facility to give you an idea of what, what we can expect. You have some examples of kind of what is in the area and what we've allowed in the past, and what we've seen with the concerns or lack of concerns with the size of a building.
But this works for you.
This works for us.
Nineteen ninety-five plus one thirty-seven mile, so.
Yes.
All right. All right. Is there any, for, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks, Mr. Ling.
And we are in a public hearing still.
Yeah, we are in a public hearing. So is there, I think, I mean, there's, there's a couple others that have signed in, but they didn't, you know, mention that they wanted to speak. But is there someone that would like to speak to this? From the public? Okay.
We won't buy it.
We won't. All right. Is there a motion? Or any further discussion? Motion?
Motion.
If you do have the motion, I suggest that you also include the changes to section two as well.
It's twelve point three-two, and what's the other number?
Well, this, they make changes here from what's in the packet.
Well, it's part two of that section.
Part two of that section. Okay. So if you just had, if you left it at section twelve point three-two, then it should be okay. Okay. Well, I will make a motion that the Utah County Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed text amendments to sections twelve point three-two of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance with modifications as specified in the staff report and as presented, along with any applicable renumbering and reformatting in each section based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Thank you.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. Any further discussion? We'll start with Commissioner here at this time?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, we now will move to section F of our agenda, which is a zone map amendment. Is this still? Yeah, this is still open, right?
Yeah, we still have this one.
So I just, I don't know if I need to, I'm having a hard time with applicants, but the applicant for this item is also not here, so just, just be aware. Let's see, let me get this going. So this item is a proposed zone map amendment from the CE1 zone to the RA5 zone. Let me actually go directly to this. This is kind of the area that we're talking about. Just to give you a little background, this area was part of Payson. They went through the process of disconnection. That process is basically leaving a city and going back into unincorporated areas. We don't see that happen a lot, but when it does, one of the requirements in our ordinance requires it to be zoned the CE1 zone. So even though before this went into the city, it was zoned RA5, when it come, when it leaves the city and comes back into the county, it is required by ordinance to be zoned the CE1, which is the most restrictive zone that we have. The applicant has requested the area, so let me give you a little closer view. This is the area that we're talking about that is being requested to be rezoned. As you can see, it's surrounded mostly by Payson City, and then there are areas of RA5 zone. This is kind of the area that is, the aerials of this area that kind of show similar uses, agricultural uses in this area that kind of match what is in the RA5 zone. And on the property, it's, it's been irrigated and farmed for quite a long time, and the zoning previous to annexing into Payson City had always been in an agricultural zone. This, the applicant, so just to give you a little background on the, I don't know if I have any, nope, I don't. So the applicant has utilized this property for agricultural uses for quite a while. The, the area, this parcel here, just to give you an idea, is currently, well, it was, it's one acre, one acre inside, an area, and that is, that parcel is, was a non-conforming lot of record before it was annexed, and it would still be a non-conforming lot of record in the CE1 zone, and continue to be a, a non-conforming lot of record in the RA5 zone if the zoning were changed. The non-conforming, sorry, its parcel of record is a designation that allows, kind of for the grandfathering of that parcel to remain in that size and configuration as long as they don't change it to especially, to a smaller size. It allows the, the house that's on that property to continue to exist. It allows the use of that property for accessory dwell, structures and other, other uses going along with the RA5 zone. So it continues to allow for those uses without being required to increase in area to the five acres minimum. This parcel is less than five acres. This parcel, this parcel, and a parcel over here across the street were part of a farm unit, originally approved as a farm unit. That designation was put in place in the nineteen, around the nineteen seventies-ish that kind of allowed for caretaker dwellings and secondary caretaker dwellings based on acreage use and the farming that went on on the property. Currently, those uses can remain. The applicant has expressed an interest in subdividing this property into five-acre lots, which is the reason that they have disconnected, because they were not able to be serviced by the city. I think it was mainly a power issue because of some of the conflicts between the city's power and a, another, another agency that provided power in the area. So they are asking to, they wanted to disconnect so that they could develop this property into five-acre lots. They live in the area. In, once they go through the process of subdividing, this parcel would, would be required to meet the minimum acreage of that zone. So it would have to have at least five acres in order to maintain that dwelling that's on that property. There is a mobile home that would either have to be an accessory dwelling or be removed if they went through that process. That's just to give you an idea of allowed uses that would be allowed in the, in the RA5 zone. Also, if they remained in the CE1 zone, there's a fifty-acre minimum, and obviously, I think that they're reluctant to subdivide property into fifty acres at this point. So they wanted, they wanted to rezone that so that they could develop this property into five-acre lots. That's the staff report. The area includes those three, those three parcels and the road that was also included in the, in the disconnect. So there's some areas of the road that are part of the CE1 zone that we would like to include in that application to make sure that the zoning stays consistent with adjacent zoning in the area. Any questions?
Yes. So in, in, in our history, what's the precedence on these disconnecting? I know it's rare, but we, if they were RA5, are they generally, I mean, either they come back as CE1, but...
Right. So, yeah, it's just a process we go through. It's, it's generally to discourage disconnection from happening so that a property doesn't go back and forth to get the answer they want. In this case, it was a little bit different. They tried to work with Payson City to develop the property. Were unable to do that in, within the city because of those conflicts. And so the solution that they wanted to, that they came up with was to be able to disconnect so that they could work with the, the power company in that area and, which we don't, which we don't have any conflicts with in developing in...
That's the danger. Do they, do they, under CE1, I mean, as far as the dwellings, there's, there's no...
Yeah, if they, if they remained the way that they were, they would not have, I mean, they'd be grandfathered in as, as kind of an existing use.
Either way, the dwellings are okay. It's just they wouldn't be able to subdivide.
Right. So, yeah, they, they could subdivide, but they'd only get two lots potentially out of that whole area. And that's not, not something that they want to do. So they're, and it's consistent with the zoning in the area, it's consistent with the zoning that was previously there in, in place. Our ordinance does require that to be CE1, so he's just going through the process of, of asking for a rezone. He's also talked to one of our planners about starting the process for subdividing the property and has met with them already.
And, and I guess I can ask, well, if I'm going to ask legal, I probably shouldn't do it in public forum, but it, it's pretty hard for us not to give RA5 when it's surrounded. I mean, we'd have to have a pretty good reason not to, and, and usually, too, you, you have the higher density closest to a city, you know? So if we didn't do this, it's, we've got to have a pretty good excuse not to do this, right?
Rezone's a legislative act, so you don't need much to support your decision.
Still can't be arbitrary and capricious.
In Washington and Salt Lake, you don't need a lot. You have pretty wide discretion, but you've listed good reasons.
So who owns the roads in this now? Is this the new, or is this the property owner that owns those roads?
No, the, the, in the process of disconnecting, I think when working with Payson City, they requested that those roads be included in the disconnection. Generally, we would not, the county does not want those roads back in the county. They would want those to be maintained by Payson City. However, they were included, and we don't want to leave little strips of CE1 remaining in those, in those areas. So we want to include those in the, in the request to, just so that it's clean and the entire area is in the RA5 zone.
So in, in the disconnect, they became county roads?
Correct.
So now that requires the county to go, I guess on the south side, still not Payson, but it's almost surrounded by Payson and probably will soon be surrounded by Payson with county maintaining roads in Payson City.
Yeah, especially when they work out the power situation for that area.
Another question, so the, the parcel that's kind of up the upper right corner outside of that property, there's, it looks like there's two homes there, but they're certainly not five-acre lots each. Are those non-conforming as well?
Those are actually, let me, sorry, I turned off the cities. Those are actually within the city boundaries. So they're, they're... within the city boundaries. So they're, they're, um, under the jurisdiction zoning requirements of Payson City. So I don't know the history of that, of that area, but, um, I don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over that.
Don't know if you have an answer to this, but this problem that this particular property owner had, are other property owners in that area potentially going to have to have the same problem?
Um, I, I, they may. Um, this, this property owner, um, is facing this problem. I think he's been working on it for about a year because he wants to develop the property. I don't know how many other areas are, um, looking at that. Um, the issue with the power, between the Payson Power and the power company that services this area, I think they are trying to resolve those, those issues. And I, I think it's been difficult between, um, those. I think it's just kind of, the agreements haven't been worked out between those. So it's possible. Um, we haven't, this is, this property is the only one that we've had questions about disconnecting. We generally don't see a lot of disconnections happen. Um, the, but to answer your question directly, yes, that, that, those could happen in the future. We haven't had any requests, um, from anybody else in that area to disconnect.
And is camp, the assumption to be made is probably having a lot to do with sewer. I mean, because, because I, I don't think you can, can you have sep- or, uh, septic tanks within municipalities these days or?
If they're further than three hundred feet away from existing facilities.
Yeah, most, most jurisdictions have a requirement that if they're within, like, like Sullivan said, if they're within a certain distance of a sewer line that they have to connect. Um, I think there are some state health, uh, administrative rules that kind of, kind of dictate some of that to some degree. Um, in this case. So in this case, the, the, the property owner, um, I think was anticipating.
I mean.
Using septic systems, but I'm not sure. Um, I, but their main concern and their, their main issue in developing the property was with the power.
With the power company.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I have a question. And you might have explained this, why was it originally designated as CE, critical environment?
So, yeah.
Wasn't clear to me.
So, um, in our ordinance, under, um, chapter ten, there is.
I missed that.
Just automatically becomes that when it switches.
Yeah, I missed that. I was like.
This, this statement here that any, any, um, portion of the county, oh, sorry, any area or portion of this county which is not clearly zoned on said map, um, because of an action which would have, um, which would leave an unzoned enclave of the, of the property in unincorporated area is hereby declared to be in the CE one environmental.
It's punishment.
So because of the disconnection, they did not have zoning.
So the default is CE?
Correct.
And prior to being in Payson, it looks like they were RA five.
Right, so Payson zoning, they had kind of a similar zone to what we had.
It's interesting. Wow. Makes a lot of sense, but. Okay, I just want clarity. I was confused a little bit by that.
All right, we need someone new to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. That the Utah County Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the official Utah County zone map.
Did we have a public hearing on this one? Did we invite public comment on this?
Did we? Yeah, I think we tried to see if anyone wanted to.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Sorry, just make sure.
I don't see anybody.
And now I don't see anyone. So if they, they were invited, now they left.
Maybe somebody did.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Utah County Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the official Utah County zone map for the proposed area, including parcels listed there. Do I need to say every number? Okay. Currently designated as critical environment CE one zone, to be designated as residential agricultural RA five zone, based on the findings specified in this staff report under subsection four.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the proposed, uh, Utah County zone map change. Just another question. So again, this, the reason they couldn't develop in Payson is a conflict with power. Is that our understanding?
That was the information that we got from the applicant, yes. Yeah, they, um, SESD is the company and they just recently separated through a very contentious, um, is a kind of separation between Payson Power and, and, and SESD, I think. So there's some issues between the two, trying to work out what happens in these areas where SESD still owns lines and power in this, infrastructure in this area.
So for some, you know, unforeseen reason or whatever, they get this settled out, I mean, they could, would, would it be advantageous to the property owner at, at, if they got those things worked out to go back to Payson and annex back into Payson?
That was his intention in the first place. They, they tried to work those, through those issues. He was not able to, but yes, um, I think in the future, once those get worked out and, and there is infrastructure to support it, I think that if they, I think his intention was to try and keep agricultural in this, agriculture in this area and they, so they are, um, fine with five acre lots is what the information that they gave to me. Um, they want, they didn't want higher density in this area currently, um, since they live close to it. So I don't know if they would have asked for more than a, a smaller lot size if they were in Payson or if they still would be fine with a five acre lot. So, but generally it's more advantageous to be in, in the city typically.
And if we pass this, then they'll still be beholden to the county requirements for proving of water rights and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
We'll start down here with Commissioner Allison on this vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, that was.
Let's see, this is.
Uh, passing unanimously for a recommendation to the Utah County Commissioners. And that moves us to, um, other business, and I do think we might have some other business.
I don't think we do.
Okay, good, let's, let's hear some other business for a second.
The other business we wanted to bring up, um, Commissioners, just because.
And do we need to, should we close our public hearing first?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Anyone?
So closed. So moved.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing, elder, or, uh, elder, Commissioner Harris. This is the vote to close the public hearing?
Yes.
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 Okay, public hearing closed. We'll now go to.
Just wanted to discuss briefly with you now, uh, we don't have to go into a lot of detail, um, maybe some obligations, responsibilities you have and don't have to, to people. You recent, you might have recently received an email, uh, someone trying to contact you in regards to your work here. Um, probably the best approach I could advise you or recommend you, uh, take is this is, uh, an open public body. Everything we do here is in full, uh, view of the public. Um, you are actually prohibited from any ex parte contact, which means one-on-one contact with anyone who has business before this body, if it's quasi-judicial. That would be, um, conditional use permits, um, extensions on permits, um, something where you are making the final decision. Um, you're treated quasi-judicial, meaning you're like, you're sitting as a judge. And one of the primary rules of the courts is we don't allow people to approach a judge after hours, offline, out of a meeting, out of court, and talk about their cases. Obviously, you can see the conflict there. It causes problems. We need things to be done in, in an open meeting. So, and, and we will be doing open meeting training as soon as you guys have an agenda that will allow it. Maybe a month or two from now. Not next month, but summer usually slows down and we'll do that. Um, it's, it's brief, it's informative, it's, it's useful. But until then, just keep that in mind that, um, your business should be done here. If someone contacts you, someone sends you something, someone walks up to you and just hands you something, it's best to get that to the staff at community development and give them a report. This is what happened. Here's who called me. Here's who texted me, whatever, and just have no contact after that. Report it, uh, deliver whatever was given to you and then, and then, once, once it gets into the staff's hands, we can make sure it goes out legally and lawfully and, and, and to all parties and make sure that, that it's done right. Um, regarding this email, we will respond. Um, we will make clear that it was improper, um, possibly unlawful. Um, the threat, um, to reveal personal information is against the law. Uh, it will be prosecuted if it's done, um, if, if anything's done like that. Um, they have access to you, okay? The public has access to you through the county. That's the way we've intended it. That's the way we want it. Um, you know, there's suggestions that you should have a cell phone from the county. Don't recommend that. We don't have those. I don't know why you would want that. Um, you also don't need a government email. Uh, there's an email that's provided through community development. Anyone wants to email you information, it, it will get to you. Okay? That's not a problem. It's not about access. What this is about, it's about improper access. They want to get you one-on-one and either convince you or threaten you. It doesn't matter why or what their intent is. It's, it's unlawful. And so we wanted you to be, to, to assure you that this will be taken care of. It will be handled. Um, if any of you, like I said, receive contact, report it. And if any one of you, if he, if someone were to do something in social media or in the public or at your house or neighborhood, anything regarding your job here, report it, okay? Uh, we're simply not going to allow harassment or threats, uh, anything of that nature. Um, we make it clear that you are citizen volunteers. Um, you're doing this out of the goodness of your heart and we'll use the full resources of the county to protect you. Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, I have just one question. So if, if they had a, I don't, I mean, like, is the only way to get on the agenda here to submit an application? Or is there, can they just a- ask to have an item on the agenda for a public hearing on a, on a topic?
Generally, you need to have an application. Um, but that doesn't, that doesn't foreclose them from coming and talking about it during a public hearing. Um, some commissions do public comment. Um, there's pros and cons to that. Um, but clearly in public hearings, you hear from anyone in the public who has anything. And the truth is, if something is sent in, we're going to look at it. And if it's at all appropriate, we're going to let you see it, okay? Because like, well, how I started this, we're about open public meetings and doing things in the public transparently. Uh, the sun's shining in the law. That, that is, that governs everything we do. And so even if they aren't on the agenda, even if they can't be here, if they will simply get something to the staff, we will make sure it gets to you, but properly, because the other side has to see it too and has to have time to respond to it. Um, so we're not trying to foreclose anyone or shut someone out. What we are trying to do is stop things like this, threats and harassment, and ex parte contact, which is clearly prohibited by law. Anything else? And going forward, I think we're going to work out something so it will be very clear that this body will have, uh, an email and a phone number that anyone who wants to contact you can get in touch with the board.
And the only reason I asked, asked my question is that, that, do you think that, that they feel like there's, there's a, you know, a stiff arm from, from, from this group so that some information never gets to the commission? Is that, is that why?
Not in this case. Not in this case at all.
All right.
Um, this, this person has a long history here, uh, a long history of doing things like this. So no, I don't think that was it at all. It, it was to coerce you individually.
Okay. Just, just to be clear also, when we receive anything, we, as much as we can, we, uh, try and get that information to you. If we get comments about anything, any public comments, we try to keep it accurate. Even if they're phone calls, we try to keep an accurate record and make sure that you hear about those contacts that we have. So if you, and, and you're welcome to contact us directly about any of those things. If you have concerns or, um, want to talk about a specific item on the agenda, we are open to also having you come in and talk to us about those, um, comments or agenda items as you see fit.
Okay. And then just one last thing, I think maybe you mentioned this, but there is an upcoming agenda item that this person is interested in, or at least he might have mentioned that too, but.
He did.
Um, i- i- it's not next month, maybe a couple months?
It is, it's on the agenda for next month.
Next month, next month. Okay, so we'll, we'll be seeing more information about which is, which issue.
I'm gonna miss the drama. I'll be here next month.
I think that's, I think that's one thing that's critical that, that, uh, maybe I didn't realize or, or, or take full account of, is when we have items presented here and we have the, you know, the presenter or people in, in, in opposing opposition of it, this is really the only time that we are allowed to ask questions and really dive into it with those that oppose it or those that are pro for it. So we need to, you know, not have fear of asking questions because this is the time to do it, because we can't approach them afterwards and they're not supposed to approach us. So, you know, really dive into those questions during this meeting so that we can get all that stuff vetted out, so that we can do our job the best way we can.
I agree.
So can you help me understand? So it's, is it, you know, because this body has two functions, you know, and sometimes we're legislative, sometimes we're judicial. So it's just on the judicial side that we're not allowed? Because, I mean, that's just different than my experience when I was in legislature. I mean, I got lots of hate mail and lots of contact and lots of, you know, I got a death, I got death, I got a death threat, you know? Uh, so when can, I mean.
Quasi-judicial, it's prohibit.
Okay, so when is it?
You just cannot have.
You just can't even have a conversation?
Right.
It's not a matter of two, two of us can't have a conversation. I mean, because, because we were always kind of taught that you can't have a, a quorum, you know, that was the, the, no, no. But if it's judicial, we just can't have a conversation.
You cannot.
And those are in, in this realm, judicial, are you, did you say, uh, uh, which ones are judicial, which ones are legislative?
There will be some extensions on permits that you'll look at, um.
And because the, on the permits, we're the final decision body.
So it's just whatever, it's the, we're the final.
Right. When it's going up to the commission, you're just an advisory board.
Okay, so then those, if somebody talks to us, we're okay, having, or?
Well, so the ordinance is we discourage that, okay? Um, it, it can only go wrong for you and us if you have that contact. And, and the answer to someone is who wants to give you information, please.
Put it in writing.
Send this on to this email to community development or call them and, or take it into their office. That's the best answer you can give anyone that wants to approach you about anything on this board. Say, hey, we want that information. We want all the information we can get, but please get it to us the right way, and that's through, through Marie at the office.
And, and, and is, is another option to attend a meeting?
Yes.
So they attend the meeting, right? I mean, that's obviously, right? And if they came here and they said, well, you know, I'm looking at the agenda and it's not, you know, you're not really quite covering my concern that I came here for. Is there still a place for them? I mean, you said public comment.
We don't have public comment at, on the agenda item in this commission. It's just something we haven't done.
But if someone came in and, I don't know, put their name down here, I have a really important, I don't know, I guess we, we just ignore them until they went through you?
Like a general concern? Is that what you're talking about?
I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know. I mean.
On our agenda.
We've listened to some pretty wide-ranging, non.
I'm, I'm just trying to think, you know, like if you told them, hey, if you, if you have a concern, come to, come to the meeting and address the commission, which is the right answer. But if they came here with a, an item that wasn't on the agenda, then we'd be kind of giving them the stiff arm again.
Should you direct them at that point to submit to Marie or through the, the email address and ask to be on the agenda?
As I've thought through it, that is the best course of action.
Just have them contact and then if you feel that's important, we could put it on the agenda.
And then you can do with, with it whatever you feel is necessary. But the truth is, Chair, if someone were to stand up right now and want to address you, I'm guessing you would let them talk.
Absolutely would, right?
And no one would stop you.
Right.
Now, if they want to take, if they want you to take action or something, we would definitely stop it at that point.
Sure.
But if they simply wanted to address you, I think that's the kind of government we run here, is we want to hear from people and we're not going to slap them down and say you can't say that.
Well, I think that was, the, the only reason I'm asking is because that's kind of what I read implied in, in there somehow was that, you know, they wanted to reach us outside the process because they, you know, I mean, I, to me, that's seemed like what he was trying to get at. But I, I'll, I'll let you deal with that and.
Also to follow up on that, the county.
My email must have been easy to find. My email must have been easy to find because he had everyone's email listed there.
I, I got an email, so.
So just to follow up with that, the commission, county commission does have public comment. You can also direct them to the county commission and if the county commission feels like it's something that they want the planning commission to look at, they can direct staff to bring an agenda item or direct the planning commission to review this item as well. So there are forums that they can go to that, that allow them to address those with the county commission.
I will say, the email that they had for me is not one that I typically use, but I have put it on my Republican County registration.
That's where I'm sure.
So I'm sure that's where you got it.
What, so, I know we, we don't have public comment, but i- i- is that, is that by our choice or the county commission's choice or by ordinance or what?
Probably by your choice.
By our choice.
Yeah, if the board wanted to do that.
So if we found.
As you can see.
Yeah.
The public usually isn't here.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too, yeah.
It's not that they don't care, it's just, this isn't a priority.
Yeah.
And, and it's also the scope of what it is that we do. We are here to address only the things that come to us, whereas the planning commission, no, not the planning commission, the county commission and staff are able to take action way outside of what we're able to do. So usually that's probably the better.
Really quick, so, so when I'm reading through this information, um, I kind of want to know, I mean, and you guys do have a recommendation at the end, but, you know, sometimes I want to, I want, you know, in my head, love for that to be elaborated upon, right? So are we allowed to reach out to you and say, okay, I mean, you know, like.
Staff?
Yeah, to reach out to staff and just say, okay, so there's this thing and like really ultimately, I know you guys are supposed to be unbiased, but at the same time, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, I mean, I, I know we have great commissioners, you know, county commissioners, but they're also not city planners. And, and I do think that you could, I think if we can merge the city planners with what we're doing here, I, I think you can get a good hybrid, right? But, but, you know, so.
If they're not good, we should recommend they get fired.
Well, I, well, I, I just, yeah, I mean, I just think, you have people that are, you know, county commissioners that aren't planners and I, I attended that planning, you know, that, the city, whatever, the state planning thing. And there's a lot of things to consider, huge things to consider, and I just kind of feel like there's people that are making decisions that don't have that as well. And so I would love to be able to, you know, I, I, I wish you guys could be less neutral and say, well, from a city planning standpoint, like, what do you think?
Yeah, we're, like, like Dale said, we're always available. I've, I've worked in many jurisdictions that, um, planning commissioners and city council have come into, um, into uh offices, even some have even set up a monthly meeting just to discuss the agenda. And if you want that type of meeting, you're welcome to request that and we can accommodate that.
Say that again, we, we could do what?
Just, you can request it from us and we can just set up a meeting that you can come in and talk about the agenda if you want to go through the agenda and all the items and questions that you have, if you want to do that.
I, I know, that's, that's something to look into because honestly, like.
We are the staff for the planning commission, so whatever we can do to help you do your jobs, you just have to say it. You want an explanation, you want more information, maybe you want to find out the background to something, just contact us.
You guys also have a lot of um, his, I mean, you, you have a lot of, you see a lot of these things and um, and you have a background that we don't have, but I feel like that you're always trying to be neutral. And it's like, I, I don't necessarily, I want to know what's gonna be the law.
This one, we weren't exactly neutral on this one.
I know, but when you start actually, what's the real, what do you really think, you know what I mean? Like, in terms of, because you're seeing the ramifications of city planning gone. I mean, how do you, how do you get a community of, of like, that looks like Park City, right? That's the vision.
Right, yeah, and, and we're, we're happy to, to kind of go over those questions and if you have um things that you want to request for a meeting, different information you want us to provide for a meeting, you're welcome to do that. Realize that, that um we have some limitations as far as time goes. So if you do see, and it's difficult for us, um, we'll try, maybe we can try and get out the agenda earlier so that you can see what's on the agenda, but um, just let us know. And if you need to continue an item, you can always continue an item if you want more information about that item too.
But I, just, I would commend staff and their kind of seeming neutral, I mean, just, just the political realities of living in a, a pretty conservative state, the, you know, you have, you have to balance between democracy and becoming viewed as elitist, so that, and I think that's what they're trying to, to balance and I think they do a pretty good job of.
But they're also, like, you guys are also going to meetings, you're going to conferences, you're seeing, you're going to different cities, you're, you, you have a totally different lens, you have a city planning lens that unless you're, unless you've gone, haven't gone through that whole process, you're not gonna have.
But the, the general plan provides that overall general scope or idea for the county.
Right, and, and by the way, we are planning on going through a, a major update to the general plan that, which you will be involved in very, very significantly, so just be aware that, that, that's coming and you'll be able to kind of, you'll, what we try to do is get the opinions of, of the unincorporated areas of Utah County to kind of address some of these questions, like, for instance, the one that came up, do people still want to preserve ag in the county? Is, is that a priority for them? Those are the types of things that we'll be looking at and addressing and that's, like, as you can see, I referenced the general plan quite a bit in the staff report because that is the guiding document for, as Sullivan said, the, those are the, the guiding documents for the direction that the county is supposed to be going. If those change, then the policies of the county would change, so it's important to make sure that, that as we go through the process of looking at the general plan, to try and be involved as much as you can. So we'll try and, we'll try and include you um from the beginning and, and um right to the end, so.
Good deal.
Well, I, I, I doubt that many of us are neutral on the BYU game going on right now, so.
I have no idea.
Is there any further discussion?
No idea.
All right, then we are adjourned, thank you.
Just as a friend.